I tested negative.
Teddy?
But I'm just saying, it's just weird.
Love it.
Great, you all set? Good evening. Time being seven o'clock and call of February 2nd, 2022, meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. Please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to be public, whose stance our nation and the God, indivisible, Beauty, and Justice for all.
Announcements from the Chair. All citizens are now welcome to attend public board and committee meetings in person. Additionally, in an effort to maximize citizen engagement opportunities, you will be able to continue to participate remotely via phone or Zoom, using the provided phone number, or you may click the Zoom link that is on the posted agenda and on the town's website. That phone number is 929-205-6099, and enter the meeting ID number, which is 898-2200-4377. Again, the meeting ID is 898-2200-4377, and then hit the pound sign. The attached link and phone number will be active for the duration of the meeting for citizens to ask questions and/or voice concerns. If residents are just interested in watching the meeting, it will also be livestreamed by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel 11 and Verizon Channel 29. Citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to five minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during citizens' comments. The town council will give remarks appropriate consideration and may ask the town administrator to review the matter. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Johnson, Johnson, you had your hand up first. Please just name and address, please.
James C. Johnston Jr., 789 West Central Street, Franklin, Massachusetts. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, one and a half years ago, in the hot summer of 2020, when the air conditioning was not operating, was the last time I have the privilege of appearing in the same room as the body. I did not attend the meeting officially. I gave two rooms to the 35,200 citizens of the town of Franklin for display in the Franklin Historical Museum, and they were accepted by the town council. The first of these rooms is formally dedicated on Thursday, July 15th, 2021. It is Carl "Clara" J. Foss Johnston Memorial Federal Piler at the Oliver Pond House, and is furnished in federal period antiques and artifacts of the 1790 to 1825 period. It can be seen on your computer by Googling "The Clara Johnston Room at the Franklin Historical Museum" in an excellent film format produced through the most professional talents of Chris Flynn. The second room given was the James C. Johnston Senior Keeping Room, which clearly shows what the principal family gathering spot of an early American house would look like in the town of Franklin, covering the period of 1690 to about 1825 with its authentic period furnishings. As I have stated, I have been working on this project since the Franklin Town Council accepted this gift on behalf of the citizens of Franklin a year and a half ago. Imagine my surprise when I receive the following short email just 11 days ago on Saturday, January 22nd, 2022, from the Chairman of the Franklin Historical Commission, Mary Olson. It reads, Dear Jim, Happy New Year. I hope that you are staying safe and healthy. I have some news that I know won't please, that you will not be pleased with. At our last commission meeting, the commission members expressed concern over giving up more exhibit space to the permanent exhibit. Their concern is that the museum is small with limited space as it is, and they don't feel it would be right to give up another room. Everyone agrees that the room dedicated to your mother is beautiful, and I know you were at the point where you were ready to move ahead, so I apologize for the abrupt news and short notice. I hope that this doesn't put you off your willingness to continue to make appearances and present your valuable historical talks at the museum. I can only hope that's the case. Please reach out with any questions, feedback, frustration, et cetera. I'm sorry. My best to you, Mary. This was sent to me from the Franklin Historical Museum, as was, I presume, to be an official communication. The exhibits which I donated to the town of Franklin's Historical Museum were donated to the 35,200 citizens of this community in perpetuity as a permanent exhibit, which was to be an educational tool calculated to last for a long time, long after I and members of the Franklin Historical Commission are only dust. This gift is an opportunity to view, educate, and appreciate that may never be offered again to this community. You can see a catalog of the donations featured in the keeping room, as well as a floor plan to the room and the packet of material which I have given you. I am also increasingly aware of my own mortality. Yesterday, for the first time ever, a friend referred to me as an old man. Can you imagine? Of course, I was shocked. The horror, the horror.
Hope you called the police.
I should have called them. Hey, why didn't you do something about it? Oh, God. Well, anyway, but really, but the reality is, I am an old man. I am. I'm sorry, but that's the fact of the law. After I'm dead, the mortal and departed, I won't be giving away any gifts of whole furnished rooms to the town of Franklin because I shall be otherwise engaged. So I would appreciate it if you, good people of the Franklin Town Council, take this matter of the keeping room under advisement and inform me in due time as to what your pleasure might be in regards to this gift which I have given to the town. I think that it is in the enlightened best interest of the whole Franklin community that my gift be accepted and displayed in the space which has already been made foreign in the museum, in the Franklin Historical Museum, by the Town's Department of Buildings and Grounds. It's been all prepared. It's done. It's a fait accompli. The room has, in fact, been made ready according to my suggestion and even to the choice of color and design. By the way, the space involved in the keeping room display only takes up an area of 85 to 90 square feet. That's it. More or less. You will see it in the packet I gave you regarding the keeping room. Thank you for your kind attention, and I did add in my remarks here. And this is a roadmap to my mind, so I don't go stirring up. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I understand that that's not the appropriate thing at this point. I thank you very much for your kind attendance.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Live long and prosper.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Please come forward. Just identify yourself with name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Young, and I am a lifelong resident of Franklin residing at 59 West Street. Before I start, I would like for you to answer a few questions truthfully. Would you like to smell marijuana in your, in and around your home on a daily basis? Would you like for your family and friends to have to park streets away when they come to visit you or attend a family gathering at your home? Would you like to be woken up two or three times a night in the early morning hours to very loud music? Would you like to walk out your front door and find people sleeping in their cars? Would you like to find a spot to place your trash bins on trash day when they're to be empty? If you had answered no to any of these questions, then you can sympathize with us, the residents that live on East, West, Nathan Street, Church, and Walnut Ave. This and more is what we are living with on a daily basis with Dean students parking on our streets in front of our homes. We buy our homes for the same reason as you do. We love the town and location. Yes, our neighborhood is near Dean College, and Dean, and Dean and our neighborhoods have been existing together for many years, and this problem has never occurred until back in 2015. I came before the town council in March of 2017, when we had about 50 cars parking along our streets. It then included Union Street at the time. Our town administrator had installed parking spaces to our 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, parking signs. Unfortunately, this solution has not worked. The signs are not monitored on a daily basis, and Dean students not only keep their cars in the same spot for days at a time, they also create their own illegal spaces, and students don't seem to care if their car is even ticketed. Back in 2021, I had written to Senator Karen Spilka. Someone from her office called me back and said, since Dean is a private college, she could not help us, but did say that our town administrator, town council, and Dean could all work together and resolve this issue. They told me that Framingham University had the same problem in their residential areas which divided the university. The town installed signs saying no student parking. Framingham University's security would monitor and see if any students were parking on the residential streets. They would notify the students that their car needed to be moved or their car would be towed. They said this approach seemed to work. Is this something that can be done here? If we do not do anything, it'll be the same problem year after year. We will have more and more students parking along the streets, and the public would have no place to park. During the Harvest Festival, there were only a handful of spaces for folks to park. The rest were occupied Dean students in our neighborhood. We are desperately seeking your help to resolve the parking issue. We know and understand that these are public streets, but where is the public to park when Dean students take up 90% of the parking spaces? The weekends are worse, as their visitors park in those spaces as well, so now all the spaces are taken up. What happens if there's an emergency? Franklin has had the misfortune lately of many home fires. If a home on Church Ave were to went up in flames like the home on Dean Ave did, it would be a real disaster. Emergency personnel would have to work around the cars that line up Church Ave. It would be a mess at least and could result in loss of life. Please review the petition which has been signed and handed to you by the residents living on these streets. We would like to see if we can install the no student parking signs and have Dean's security monitor. Dean's security cruises these streets on a daily basis, and they know which cars belong to the students. So please consider our petition. We know there is much more going on in the world today, but these are our homes. We are the residents of Franklin, and we feel that we live on Dean College campus. Please do not let the Dean students take over our neighborhoods. Dean College has a parking lot on Route 140 that isn't even full. These students should be parking there. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Not that you need any introduction, but if you...
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. Thank you for having me. And for those of you that don't know me, my name is Nancy Donello, and I'm your town clerk. I just have a few updates from the clerk's office. First, I want to remind the residents of Franklin that your annual dog license is up for renewal. There are several ways that you can renew the dog's license or your pup's license. You can go online by logging on to franklinma.gov, navigating to the town clerk's department, and then pay bills online, or just come in and see us. Visit us. Say hi. Get out of the house. We all need to. Or you can obviously wait until you receive your town census and the dog registration form will be attached to it. Town census. It's late this year. It's late because of the addition of the Ninth Precinct. The state had to update the system. I'm hoping to have that census out by the end of February. Deb, you especially know it is late. Usually you would have it by mid-January. I'm hoping, fingers crossed, the end of February. Don't hold me to it. Maybe Jeff can like a fire under. Thank you. And that's it. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Nancy. I think there was one more. Please, just name and address, please.
Hi. Jane Calloway Tripp, 607 Maple Street. I'm actually going to further what Pam was saying with the Dean students parking. Let's do one thing. When you are a student at Dean, the only right you have as a student is the right to that education. Everything else is a privilege. Dean School has multiple parking lots throughout the town that residents of this town cannot park in because you will be towed. I know this because my son went to an EMT class at Dean, and I didn't have a sticker, and I pulled into the parking lot to pick him up, and I was told I needed to move from the parking lot because otherwise I would get ticketed and towed. And I moved, but we can't use their parking lots. The street parking is for residents, not for Dean students. Parking overnight, parking over the two hours, leaving your car there for days is unacceptable. There is a very good, simple solution, but it would require that the town, council, administrator, our police, and Dean work together. You know which cars are Dean students because they have Dean stickers. So they park and they get a ticket. Dean gets notified. Second time, they get towed. If it's a third time, Dean can revoke the right to have car privileges at the school. Most colleges don't allow freshmen to have cars on campus. Well, there's no rule saying that you can't revoke the car privileges from the sophomores, seniors, or juniors of this college if they can't follow the rules. The rule is you park in Dean parking lot, not in the streets and leave your car there. You're a college student between the ages of 18 and 20. Chances are, you can walk a block if you have to from your car to your campus, to your dorm, wherever. You have elderly people living on these streets that might not be able to walk past the curb, and they shouldn't have to. They shouldn't have to worry about their trash not getting picked up because people are parked where they're not supposed to, and the trash trucks can't get to their trash. They shouldn't have to worry about trying to get their trash cans back to their house because there's cars blocked there. They shouldn't have to deal with people sitting out in front of their house, smoking pot, listening to the music. They have spent their whole life now. This is time for them to have some peace, and sitting in their homes should be peaceful. So there is a solution, but it does require everybody working together. And as a town council and town administrator and our lovely police officers, the residents of this town should matter more than the Dean students because we're the ones that pay all your salaries, elect you into those seats, and fund this entire town. Dean students don't have the right to do what they want. They have the right to an education. Everything else is a privilege. Privileges can be taken away. If they can't abide by the rules, then it's time for Dean to step up and take away the privileges of these students. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Please, just come forward. Name and address, please.
James McLaughlin, 27 Church Ave, Lou Franklin. You'll have to bear with me. I'm not into this stuff here. But I do have to say something. I can't get to my house most of the time. I can't have any company, easy access to my front door. My house is on the corner of Church Ave and West Street. It's commonly known as the front line with the battle of Dean and the parking, trash, and drinking and smoking problem. Not too many years ago, Dean had their own police force. What happened to that police force? When they were, when they were there, there was little or no problem with the parking, et cetera. Now the Franklin Police Department has to take over the policing of the area at the taxpayers' expense. They've got better things to do than to babysit the students. Plus, you have to call every day. If you, if you don't, they won't think that there's a problem anymore about the parking. I seldom see a ticket on automobiles towing. Forget about it. Bear with me. I'm not used to this stuff. I guess you can't blame the students. They think, they think are told it's okay to park on the street. After a while, they can't drink, smoke, show trash out the window, or carry on on the campus parking lots. But you'd think they would have a little common sense and respect for their neighbors. What about the kids going to and from school? Is this something they should be looking at? I think the big problem is, I have down here the boss of Dean and the boss of Franklin. I get that's administrator and administrator of Franklin. But their kids don't live here, so it's not their problem. All they have to do is say enough is enough. It wasn't like this before, and there's no need to be like this now. I may have a heart attack any minute now. I'm not kidding. I had a tenant move in March of 2012. He had to move out in September of 2017. He'd be walking his dog with his daughter after work. He'd get in arguments with the students about his dog having to walk over their broken bottles, and his daughter seeing all this happen isn't a good influence. I thought I was alone with this problem, so I got a leaflet from the neighbors, and we started coming down here and trying to make sense of this tomfoolery here. We have these at the neighbors' houses, and I thought things sounded good. So I let my tenant out of his lease early, and I thought I'd do, it'd be no good to keep him there if he doesn't want to. If he's not happy, it's not going to help me either. So I decided to spruce up my house while I'm still working, making a little money. And I make less money. I bring home less money than people did doing this COVID thing on unemployment. And I'm still able to work and get it done. I'm not getting any younger. I'm Jimmy Johnson's age. I said, where's the speakerphone? Little did I know that it was just about impossible to get lumber delivered and a dumpster because of the parking problem. You can't boom over the cars, and you can't block the street. So I had to have the lumber dropped at, dropped at one end of the building while the workers on the other end of the building. It's not the best way to work. We met at the town hall, but not much help from the parking. They painted lines on the street, again at the taxpayers' expense. Church Ave only got three spaces. They're still four being used. It used to be six, but still is. You can't use it yourself. West Street got one. Usually there was two or three there. Now there's only one or two. Maybe that's good. Remember, I'm in the front lines. It's spread out. Nathan Street sometimes doesn't have any parking out there. I mean, nobody parking there. It used to be two. Where am I? About the same time all this is going on, I had a large tree come down to my house and took out my electric. Do you think I could get any of the vehicles moved? Absolutely not. You get a bucket in? No. I had to drive on top of the lawn, sunk in. Still trying to get the thing fixed now. Maybe we'll have a little more water this spring. I'll be able to get the grass growing again there.
I need to get you to finish up. You're allowed five minutes.
Okay, yeah, okay. I'll go through this quickly.
Okay.
I had a cookout. My aunt came. She was born 1926. She had to park up at the end of West Street, right next to 140. I had to walk all the way down the street, down Church Ave, up the street, up my stairs, and fell in through the door. I don't think that's the way they should be having to walk that far. Not a single person could park at the house.
Sir, I have to get you to finish up.
Yeah, you're lucky, I guess, because I likely have a heart attack, yeah.
Don't want you to do that.
It's a big, it's a big problem with the parking.
We certainly, we certainly have received that message.
What I can do and what I can't do, even with the storm here. I thought Dean was going green when the parking lot was empty, and I thought maybe they're going to start busing people like they bused me to work before, but they didn't go green. And I'm, thank you.
Yeah, you, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone out in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Alicia, I don't see anyone. Do you? Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Entertainer motion to approve the minutes from January 19th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is proclamations and recognitions. The first one this evening, we have a proclamation for Priscilla Canetta, Friends of Franklin. Priscilla, I know. Is she here?
Yeah.
Tonight, we're recognizing Priscilla Canetta, who started the Friends of Franklin over 42 years ago. And just as a lead-in, I just want to thank Roberta Trehan and Samantha Jettie for providing the information that we needed to get this proclamation done. Volunteering at time to support a cause, Priscilla is certainly passionate about this gift. One of the things I did was I looked up two or three quotes that I thought really exemplified what had been done here over the last 40 years. And the first one is, "It's not how much we give, but how much love we put into giving." That was Mother Teresa. Another one is, "You give but little when you give of your possessions. It's when you give of yourself that you truly give." That was a Chinese prophet. And the last one is, "There could be no definition of a successful life that does not include service to others." And I think Priscilla certainly exemplifies that. Tonight, I'll read from a proclamation, Town of Franklin Proclamation Honoring Priscilla Canetta on a Legacy of Philanthropic Achievement. Whereas Priscilla Canetta founded the Friends of Franklin at Christmas time in 1979, when she, along with her husband Richard and their village of friends, filled holiday baskets with food and necessities and delivered them to aid local families in need. And whereas with the creation of the Friends of Franklin, many people received critical assistance at a time when resources were not easily accessible, and over time, countless others were provided a means by which they could give back to their And over time, countless others were provided a means by which they could give back to their community by volunteering their time and resources to help their neighbors. And whereas, under the leadership of Priscilla Canetta, the Friends of Franklin thrived in the 42 years of its existence, growing in every way from the number of volunteers to fill and deliver baskets, to the number of local businesses that donated goods and services, to the number of families served each year, a number which grew to surpass 200, to the types of charities, services provided, which grew to include the collection and delivery of Christmas gifts to local children and year-round assistance with bills, rent, groceries, housing, and medical expenses for local families. And whereas, after 42 years of tremendous leadership, generosity, and kindness, excuse me, at the helm of the organization, Priscilla made the difficult decision to close the Friends of Franklin in 2021. And whereas, the citizens of Franklin extend their heartfelt gratitude to Priscilla Canetta, her family, of which a lot of here tonight, and the Friends of Franklin for their tireless efforts in helping people in need, building a stronger community and demonstrating what it means to care for one's neighbors. Now therefore be it known that Priscilla Canetta is hereby commended and recognized by the Town Council of the Town of Franklin for the creation of the Friends of Franklin and 42 years of philanthropic achievement. Signed, Thomas D. Mercer, Chairman Franklin Town Council. I'd make a call to the State House and ask our good friend Representative Jeff Roy.
Rick? Well, thank you. Priscilla, I'm amazed you started this at two years old. I'd like to know how you managed that, but congratulations. And it's truly an honor to be here to present these resolutions to you from the House of Representatives. I know that Chairman Mercer started with a quote, but I want to use a quote from our great public servant Horace Mann, who was the father of public education, who, as you know, was born here in Franklin. And he admonished us to work tirelessly to win some victory for humanity. And from what I've seen, from what you have done, you have won many victories to humanity, lifted many hearts of people and thousands of children and families. And I'm just dying to know what you're gonna do with the next 40 minutes. So, and I checked. I'm delighted that our language is different, so I can read the resolution.
Excellent.
Now, this is a resolution honoring Priscilla Cornetta for her charitable contributions to the Town of Franklin. So resolutions are actually a piece of legislation that I file and is heard on the House floor. This was heard on the House floor on January 31 of 2022. And take comfort in knowing that the vote was unanimous. Whereas the dedicated and esteemed Priscilla Cornetta is being honored and recognized for her charitable contributions to the Town of Franklin as one of the founding members of the Friends of Franklin and will be honored for her outstanding service by the Town Council, her family, and friends on February 2nd, 2022. And whereas during the Christmas season in 1979, Priscilla Cornetta at the behest of St. Mary's priest, Father Clyde Chetwin, did I read that right? Did I pronounce it right? graciously and selflessly created holiday baskets for eight families in financial distress. And whereas Priscilla Cornetta and her friend Joan Dunn realized that there were many families in need and created the Friends of Franklin, a charitable concern that provided food and gift baskets to families on the holidays, as well as year-round assistance with bills, rent, groceries, and medical expenses, Priscilla and Joan reached out to the community for donations and were met with overwhelming generosity, which allowed them to serve more than 200 families. And whereas the Friends of Franklin operated for over 40 years and went on to feed, assist, and even provide Christmas presents to those in need in the Town of Franklin, filling a need at a time when there was no other organization in town. Therefore be it resolved that the members of the Massachusetts House of Representatives hereby join with the Town of Franklin, family and friends, and that joyous child over there. Offering best wishes for good health and continued happiness as she embarks on new journeys, endeavors, and goals of fulfillment. And be it further resolved that a copy of these resolutions be forwarded by the Clerk of the House of Representatives to Priscilla Cornetta. It's adopted January 31, 2022, signed by Ronald Mariano, the Speaker of the House, Stephen T. James, the Clerk of the House, and myself, whose great honor it is to be a state representative. And as instructed by the clerk, I'm gonna transfer these resolutions to you. So thank you. I also have a small token of appreciation. It's a real token. Don't use it at place down the street there. But thank you and congratulations. And let us know what you're doing with the next 40.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, moving on. Our next item on the agenda is recognition and promotions, chief. Funny, you're back again.
Yeah, I told you, you're gonna be seeing a lot of me, so. Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. So two weeks ago, it was my pleasure to have several individuals that I've recognized that retired. Tonight, we're going to, due to some of those retirements, we have several people that are now being promoted to fill some of those slots. In two weeks, I will then come in with the new people that are new hires that we were able to do and, which is a great thing, because for the first time in about five and a half years, we'll be at full staff as of the 14th of February, which works out really well. Well, I'll further do, so like I said, we have several promotions. These individuals all have worked very hard to be where they are. Not only, you know, in their, the years of service that they've put in and their daily tasks, you know, showing leadership, dedication, et cetera, but also the process to get here is not easy. They had to go through, for some of them, written exams, for all of them, an assessment center, very stressful time, as they would all tell you, and then a panel interview. And they rose to the top at one point or another during that. And it's my pleasure to be able to bring them up here tonight and tell you how they got here, have their family come up and pin their new badge on, and they'll be sworn in again. And due to the gravity of it, I'm gonna have them come up one at, you know, one at a time.
Absolutely. I don't blame you.
So I say it's Bob from the chief at G D. All right, so this is Michael Collecky. He's being promoted to sergeant. Michael's been a member of the Franklin Police Department since 2015, after graduating first in his class in academics. And I checked that. It is true. From the 3rd MPTC Recruit Officer Class at the Randolph Police Academy. He has a bachelor or bachelors degree in criminal justice from the University of South Carolina Upstate. And in 2020, received his master's degree in organizational leadership from Nichols College. Those are his kids. Right adjoining the FPD. Michael served four years with the United States Air Force as a member of the security forces stationed at Minot Air Force Base in North Dakota, attaining the rank of sergeant, and now he's getting the stripes back again prior to his honorable discharge. Since 2019, Michael has been assigned as a detective in the department's specialized services division with the primary role of investigating narcotics-related crimes and assisting those in need of services. Michael has been instrumental with the implementation of the Norfolk County Critical Incident Management System, which was designed to track overdose-related cases throughout the county, so those suffering from substance abuse disorders may receive follow-up interviews in an effort to provide them resources and assist them in the recovery process. Michael has conducted a majority of those interviews, often accompanied by our clinician, and has worked very closely with the Safe Coalition. He has been a member of the Norfolk County Police Anti-Crime Task Force, otherwise known as NORPAC, established to facilitate a multi-agency approach to drug enforcement throughout the northern region of Norfolk County, as well as the investigation of organized crime, serial crime, violent crime, and crimes committed by traveling criminals. He has specialized training in street-level narcotics, crime scene investigation, interview and interrogation. And Michael is also a certified drug recognition expert. Gives me great pleasure to promote Michael Collecky to the rank of sergeant. And I'd like to invite his family, Jackie, his wife, and his daughters Natalie and Mila, to pin his badge.
I want to see her hold both kids and pin the badge.
And then she deserves it. And then she deserves the stripes. Hey.
Nice job.
All right.
Such an honor. Remember the first week you started this topic? Just kidding. Michael, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me, okay? I, Michael Collecky,
I, Michael Collecky.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
to faithfully execute the duties
Faithfully execute the duties?
as sergeant
As sergeant.
for the Town of Franklin
The Town of Franklin.
with respect
With respect.
integrity
Integrity.
and excellence
And excellence.
and to uphold the mission of the department
To uphold the mission of the department.
the Constitution of the United States of America
The Constitution of the United States of America.
the state of Massachusetts
The state of Massachusetts.
and the laws and ordinances
And the laws and ordinances.
of the Town of Franklin
The Town of Franklin.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Continue, chief.
Yeah. Lieutenant Zimmerman is being promoted from sergeant to lieutenant. Lieutenant Zimmerman, his career in law enforcement has spanned the past 23 years. He's been with the Franklin Police Department for the past 15 years, joining the FPD in 2007 after previously serving with the North Attleboro PD for eight years as both a dispatcher and patrol officer. Eric served for eight years in the Patrol Operations Division, where he became a field training officer and the coordinator of our mobile data terminal program. In 2015, he was transferred to the Specialized Services Division as a detective, where he excelled at leading intricate and lengthy criminal investigations. After briefly serving as a detective, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2016. For the past six years, utilizing his vast knowledge and experience, Sergeant Zimmerman has excelled as a first-line supervisor, providing leadership, mentoring and coaching to both new and veteran officers. Due to his superior leadership style, he was requested and accepted the responsibility of directing and managing the field training program and the onboarding of new police officers joining the department. The field training program is the most important field training officers, I'm sorry, training with an experienced field. The field training program is the most important training a new officer will receive. The 13 weeks of one-on-one training with an experienced field training officer is the foundation a new officer will build on throughout the 30-plus-year career. Sergeant Zimmerman reviewed the program, made necessary changes and adjustments to ensure the program was efficient and successful. His leadership of this program cannot come at a more opportune time as he has been responsible for onboarding 25 police officers in the last five years, providing a legacy of well-trained and superior officers at the FPD that will span the next few decades. Eric has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Worcester State College, a master's degree in public administration from Anna Maria College, and is a graduate of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, Suffolk University, certificate in local government leadership and management. It is my pleasure to promote Eric Zimmerman to the rank of lieutenant and assign him to lead the Specialized Services Division. Eric will be pinned by his wife Amy and his sons, Declan and Roman.
No blood yet.
Little blood's all right.
He's wearing a black coat on show.
New shirt.
It's made of steel.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Eric Zimmerman
I, Eric Zimmerman.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
to faithfully execute the duties
Faithfully execute the duties.
as lieutenant
As lieutenant.
for the Town of Franklin
For the Town of Franklin.
with respect
With respect.
integrity
Integrity.
and excellence
And excellence.
and to uphold the mission
To uphold the mission.
of the department
Of the department.
the Constitution of the United States of America
The Constitution of the United States of America.
the state of Massachusetts
The state of Massachusetts.
and the laws and ordinances
And the laws and ordinances.
of the Town of Franklin
The Town of Franklin.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Still your floor, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the last one. Certainly not least, yes.
I'm sure what it is, but I'm not gonna say it.
Deputy Chief James West began his law enforcement career at an early age during high school. He joined the Law Enforcement Explorer Program with the United States Customs Service at Logan Airport in Boston. After high school, he joined the U.S. Army Reserves, where he graduated as a distinguished honor graduate of infantry basic training. After basic training, he became a Winthrop Auxiliary Police Officer and he worked as a Boston Special Police Officer. He became a reserve officer in Winthrop in 1996. And in 1998, Jim was hired as a full-time officer with the Winthrop Police Department and went to the 9th MPOC at the Norwood Police Academy. In 2001, Jim transferred to the Franklin Police Department. Jim was promoted to sergeant in 2004 and was a patrol sergeant for 12 years until becoming administrative sergeant in 2016. During his tenure at the Franklin PD, Jim has been a motorcycle officer, firearms and TASER instructor, and was instrumental in signing the Honor Guard and Youth Explorer post. Jim is a former member of the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council's Special Tactics and Response Division, where he served as a SWAT operator, SWAT element leader, search and rescue manager, and a certified drone pilot. Jim was in charge of a group of one of the first SWAT teams called to Boston after the Boston Marathon bombings and to Watertown to assist in the search for the suspects. In 2017, Jim was promoted to the rank of lieutenant and served as the commander of the operations division before being transferred to lead the Specialized Services Division. Jim was also the lead staff instructor at the Boylston Police Academy, where he led a staff of drill instructors who have helped train hundreds of new veteran officers. During his career, Jim has been awarded many citations and awards, including the SWAT Medal of Valor, Two Combat Crosses, and Life Saving Award. Jim has a bachelor's degree in public administration from Southern New Hampshire University. I take great pleasure in promoting Jim West to the rank of deputy chief. Give him a big hug, Lisa, his son Robert, and his daughter Crystal.
And would have nothing was ever done with them. They said, we haven't received it. I'm all right.
Things going okay? But that's because you're not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, because you had something some different issue. You had nothing to do when you did it, then you.
You have.
But you're not changing your desk, guy.
Yes, we do.
Oh, my God. Why can't you keep it in your office?
Oh, I know it is. I know it is. I felt so guilty getting it. And I didn't. Crows. Oh, it is.
Calling you names. Well, if you ever need a list to call him back, just let me know. Happy to help.
You don't go agree with us. I felt bad. And Jeff has been. Talking to native at desk, I said, I know it's not bad, such a good price. But every time someone come in, I was finding myself apologizing. So beautiful that I had that desk. So. Now I don't have anymore. Trying to think of someone there. Otherwise, what are you doing with that?
There was nobody. There was nobody even around. That's town script.
I'm glad I'm coming. Coming up.
The pool waiting. They're moving to a new place.
Absolutely. I was going to say, we didn't want to say it.
Things are not that bad.
What's that?
Things are not that bad.
Things are not that bad?
My neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, thank you so much. Very nice to meet you all.
Good.
Jim used the whole bunch. All right, folks, let's, uh...
All right. Thanks. Congratulations again. Best of luck.
All right, where's Glenn and Miller?
There he is.
I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm coming. Something's up. I'm just kidding.
Chris, coming back on? Okay.
Want to be efficient in his visits, right?
Are you? Now we're waiting to take. Here he goes.
A bio breaks.
Call the February 2nd Town Council meeting back to order. Next order of business is appointments. We have one this evening, Michael R. Rain to the Conservation Commission. Clerk will read the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm very happy to read this appointment for the Conservation Commission for Michael R. Rain at 1:20 Eric Drive, Franklin, Massachusetts, 02038. The Conservation Commission has recommended the appointment, Michael R. Rain, to serve as a member of the Conservation Commission with a term to expire on June 30, 2022. This is a motion to ratify the appointment by the town administrator, Michael Rain, to serve as a member of the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just really quickly to note, this is finishing out a current term, and so upon reappointment, if Mr. Ryan wants to, which I assume he will, I will just take that up like in the normal process in June.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to appoint Michael R. Rain to the Conservation Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no hearings this evening. License transactions. We have two, the first one, license modification, change of manager. Let's Eat Franklin LLC doing business as three restaurant located at 461 West Central Street, Franklin, Mass. Clerk would read the license transaction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a license transaction. This is a change of manager for Let's Eat Franklin LLC doing business as three restaurant at 461 West Central Street, Franklin, Mass, 02038. Let's Eat Franklin LLC DBA III restaurant is seeking approval for a change of manager on their subsection 12 restaurant, all alcohol licensed beverages licensed, and new manager will be Corey J. Hickox. All departments have signed off on this application. This is a motion to approve the request by Let's Eat Franklin LLC DBA III restaurant for a change of manager to Corey J. Hickox.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it's just a simple change of manager.
Gentlemen, anything to add?
No.
Questions from the council. Counselor Chandler.
Just through you, Mr. Chairman, just quickly, which one's Corey? Hi, it was in our packet we get, you know, like your resume and everything, but I thought it was great that you wrote up that whole synopsis on how you would deal with different alcohol things. That was very helpful, I really thought that was great that you did that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Best of luck.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Next one is license modification, change of officers, directors, Rare Hospitality International Incorporated doing business as Longhorn Steakhouse located at 250 Franklin Village Drive, Franklin, Mass, 02038. Clerk will read the license modification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is also another license transaction for a change of offices and directors for Rare Hospitality International Incorporated doing business as Longhorn Steakhouse at 250 Franklin Village Drive, Franklin, Mass, 02038. Rare Hospitality International Incorporated doing business as Longhorn Steakhouse is seeking approval for a change of offices and directors on their subsection 12 restaurant, all alcoholic beverages licensed. The new offices will be Angela Simmons as director, president, and treasurer, and Lindsay L. Corin as vice president and secretary. All departments have signed off on this application, and this is a motion to approve the request by Rare Hospitality International Incorporated doing business as Longhorn Steakhouse for a change of offices and directors as described above.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just because this is a fairly nuanced one, this is simply, we are acting as a pass-through for the state. These are corporate changes for the entire chain. I think we deal with these normally with the 99, but I just wanted to make sure it's clear that all departments have signed off on this and that they're compliant with all statutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on, presentations, discussions. We have one on the agenda this evening, the Old South Church. And I know Mike D'Angelo, Director of Facilities, is here, as well as, I think Gus Brown, our building inspector, is here, and I would ask Jamie to do a little lead-in here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, the council and the folks at home. So one of the goals approved at the last meeting was a discussion, if you will, at the council level on the Old South Church on Washington Street. And so I invited in the folks who really know what they're talking about, both Mike and Gus, as you mentioned. I'll point to the screen and for the folks in the packet really quick. We don't have a formal presentation tonight. You don't need a presentation if you read through this report. It's pretty dense. The council, several years ago, had authorized a certain amount of money, at the request of the council, to do a study on what it would cost to rehabilitate the church and what the options were. LLB Architects, who was the designer on the library, was hired, and even during the pandemic, they did come out and complete the report under Mike and Gus's leadership. And so without a formal presentation tonight, just to get to the quick hit, early bit of the pandemic, when this report came out, the town's looking at about a million and a half of renovation costs to get into the church, to rehabilitate it. And I think Gus and Mike, in consulting with them before, it's certainly with the market the way it is, with contracting and labor, certainly we would expect costs to be bigger than that for any major project like this. So certainly here to answer any questions the council has or any discussion points. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. And I think Counselor Plegory was the one that asked to have this put on an agenda, so I'll go to Counselor Plegory first.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think that perhaps we should have them give an explanation to people because we do have new counselors so that they don't know exactly what this report showed.
Sure.
So the Old South Meeting House of Franklin used to be, so people know what it is, it used to be the museum back in the day before we renovated the old senior center uptown and put the museum in a much more appropriate place. The building is in very rough condition. It was given to the town by the church back in the early 70s. And they did say, the document is in here in the study, but it says that, you know, if we ever didn't want it anymore, and we could give it back to them. But Jeff tried to give it back to them and they wouldn't take it.
It's your problem.
So, I mean, the building is built in 1856. The first time I was in there was probably the late 2007, 2008, when we started talking about the museum and moving the museum. The building is really, I mean, it's a very small building, it's tall, with high ceilings like a church would be. It is actually only about 1800, 1850 square feet, so it's the size of a small house. And when you look at, we got, I got involved a lot more when we started having, there's pictures in the report, it's down in the basement, the whole first floor is held up by a lot of trees, actually, posts, round posts from trees that hold up the entire floor. And at that point, we've been climbing around, previous building commissioner, I had found powder post beetles eating all of those posts, and they're not in really good shape. What you see from the outside isn't really a, I mean, you call it a foundation, but it's not an actual foundation. It just holds the beams that run back and forth, and then there's support intermittently, like 40 of these posts that are three feet high. And we had done this, both reports are here, we had another engineer work on it much earlier in the process, actually, we found that in the posts, use of our associates. But the building is in really, really tough condition. And I don't know, you, as the council, have, we don't really have a use for it, and as you see, the numbers are quite staggering, but it would take, it doesn't, from its conception, it never really had anything that would normally be deemed acceptable in a building in 2022.
I think probably a bigger point, or a point that we should put out there, is structurally sound. Is it structurally sound?
You know, Mike brings up a lot of good points. The outside appears as though it is, however, I was in there this past summer, and as you walk in, you kind of walk a little gingerly because you don't know if that floor is going to let go because of what the powder post beetles have done to it. So we haven't been under that floor in several years now, or in that crawl space in several years. And whether they're active or not, I don't know if Mike Keen's report touched on that, but if those beetles are still active, they could still be chomping away, so to speak, you know? And a lot of you have background building here, so you understand the significance of it, however, what's the use that is the best for the building? And I think you've got to come up with that answer first before maybe you look at what you want to do as far as salvaging the building. I mean, that's a kind of a heavy word.
Yeah.
It's not at that point yet, but, you know, over the years and over time, I'm sure in our lifetime, we're going to have to do something to it. Would you agree with me? I mean, we've looked at different scenarios. Jamie and I have talked.
Okay, moving on, presentations, discussions. We have one on the agenda this evening, the Old South Church. And I know, uh, Mike D'Angelo, Director of Facilities, is here, as well as, I think, Gus Brown, our building inspector, uh, is here. And I would ask Jamie to do a little lead in here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the council and the folks at home. So one of the goals approved at the last meeting was a pre- it was a discussion, if you will, uh, at the council level on the Old South Church, uh, on Washington Street. Um, and so I invited in the folks who really know what they're talking about, both Mike and Gus, as you mentioned. I'll point to the screen and for the folks in the packet really quick. We don't have a formal presentation tonight. You don't need a presentation if you read through this report. Uh, it's pretty dense. Um, the council, several years ago, had authorized, uh, a certain amount of money, at the request of the council, to do a study on what it would cost to rehabilitate the church and what the options were. Uh, LLB Architects, who was the designer on the library, um, was hired, and, uh, even during the pandemic, they did come out and complete the report, uh, under Mike and Gus' leadership. And, um, so without a formal presentation tonight, um, just to get to the quick hit, uh, early bit of the pandemic, when this report came out, the town's looking at about a million and a half, uh, of renovation costs, uh, to, uh, get into the church, um, to rehabilitate it. Um, and I think Gus and Mike, in consulting with them before, um, it's certainly with the, um, with the market, the way it is, with contracting and labor, certainly we would expect costs to be bigger than that, um, for any major project like this. So, uh, certainly here to answer any questions the council has or any discussion points. Um, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. And I think, uh, Councilor Plagary, that was the one that asked to have this put on an agenda, so I'll go to Councilor Plagary first.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think that perhaps we should have them give an explanation to people, because we do have new counselors, so that they don't know exactly what this report showed.
Sure.
So the old self meeting house of Franklin used to be, so people know what it is, it used to be the museum back in the day, before we renovated the old senior center uptown and put the museum in a much more appropriate place. The building is in very rough condition. It was given to the town by the church back in the early seventies. And, um, they did say, this, if you, the document is in here, in the study, but it says that, you know, if we ever didn't want it anymore, and we could give it back to them, but Jeff tried to give it back to them and they wouldn't take it.
It's your problem.
So, I mean, the building is in, built in 1856. The first time I was in there was, um, probably the late, like, 2007, 2008, um, when we started talking about the museum and moving the museum. The building is really, I mean, it's a very small building. It's tall, with high ceilings like a church would be. It is actually only about eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred and fifty square feet, so it's the size of a small house. And when you look at, we got in, I got involved a lot more when we started having, um, there's pictures in the report. It's down in the basement. The whole first floor is held up by a lot of trees, actually, posts, round posts from trees that, uh, hold up the entire floor. And at that point, we've been climbing around, um, the previous building commissioner, I had found, uh, powder post beetles eating all the, all of those posts, and they're not in really good shape. What you see from the outside isn't really a, I mean, you call it a foundation, but it's not an actual foundation. It just holds the beams that run back and forth, and then their support intermittently, like forty of these, uh, posts that are three feet high. And, um, we had done this, both reports are here. We had another engineer work on it much earlier in the process, actually, we found that in the posts, um, use of our associates. But the building is in really, really tough condition. And I don't, you, as the council have, we don't really have a use for it. And as you see, the numbers are quite staggering, but it would take, it doesn't, from its conception, it never really had anything that would normally be deemed accepts, acceptable in a building in 2022.
I think probably a bigger point, or a, a point that, uh, we should put out there is structurally sound. Is it structurally sound?
You know, Mike brings up a lot of good points. The outside appears as though it is. However, I was in there this past summer, and as you walk in, you kind of walk a little gingerly, because you don't know if that floor is gonna let go, because of what the powder post beetles have done to it. So we haven't been under that floor in several years now, or, or in that crawl space in several years. And whether they're active or not, I don't know if Mike Keen's report touched on that, but if those beetles are still active, they could still be chomping away, so to speak, you know? And a lot of you have background building here, so you understand the significance of it. However, what's the use that is the best for the building? And I think you've got to come up with that answer first, before maybe you look at what you want to do as far as salvaging the building. I mean, that's a, kind of a heavy word.
Yeah.
It's not at that point yet, but, you know, over the years and over time, um, I'm sure in our lifetime, we're gonna have to do something to it. Would you agree with me? I mean, it's, we've looked at different scenarios. Jamie and I have talked to, um, a group that was interested in it more recently, and, um, they realized the work that's been done, and I think they wanted us to do some of it, so that wasn't on the table. We never negotiated anything at that point, and of course, it would come before the council too. But, um, I think we're looking at all of you to give us some direction on where you want to head with it.
Understood. I think it's, you know, part, part of the main issue here is obviously dollars and cents, along with, uh, what's the best use for it? So until we define what the use is, uh, you know, uh, and I'm not sure what the best use is for it. We, we have, uh, multiple thoughts from multiple different groups as to what to do with it. Part of the issue that we have up there as well is we have that easement in the back, uh, that's causes a little bit of an issue as well, uh, for that building that's in the back.
Yeah, the lack of a decent septic system too is, I think it's a cesspool.
Right.
The ones with you and the bathrooms and the accessibility and...
Just, you know, I think two years ago, a million and a half, that million and a half's probably two, 2.2 at this point, I would think, just to get it up to using it for something, making it structurally sound and handicap accessible, which you'd have to do.
Mr. Chairman, tonight I, I had recently reached out to, um, Tri-County for another couple of projects that we have coming up, but tonight I thought, because they've actually added another construction crew to their, um, to their carpentry shop that is an outside, um, vendor, so to speak, um, you know, I don't know if that's something you want to look at. I know the, it's an in-depth remodel that we would have to do. That floor's gotta come out. The way it stands now, it's probably the, the elephant in the room, so to speak, and the windows and, you know, any possible asbestos that might be in there. But it might be something to explore, but then again, you gotta come up with a use too, because if you fix it up and it just falls by the wayside again, it's not something that anyone wants to see happen. I mean, you read the things about what Jim Johnson wrote about it, it's pretty interesting, but it just sits dormant.
Yeah.
Pretty to look at, but there's no use.
Question? Yeah, yeah, okay, go ahead.
I remembered back when we did this, um, survey, whatever you want to call it, uh, there was someone that was interested in it to purchase it for a home and then leave the outer facade the way it was. So it would be their responsibility to gut it out and do whatever, but it would still be looking like it does now.
I think that's a great idea. You might find a, a young couple that has carpentry skills that, that wants to purchase it, you know, for all the affordability component too. There's a lot of possibilities. Sitting the way it sits, it's great that we're talking about it again, but this time we, I think we need to do something.
I know, Gus, what is, to talk about it is one thing. We have to follow through with it, you know? It's just getting older and older, sitting there and falling apart even more. So maybe if we could do some type of an advertisement, you know, offering it for sale after we came up with a price, and then have, um, some type of a contract in that for someone who wants to go in there and do just as I said at the beginning, and, I mean, because it's going to be difficult to sell, let's face it, because of that easement in the back. Right, Mark?
Can we talk about the town?
For us to sell it, won't it be difficult?
No, I don't mean that, the easement, somebody refresh my recollection.
Oh, it's the town.
The hill, there's a pump station.
Pump station.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought. It's a water pump station.
Water pump, yeah.
Yeah.
As opposed to a sewer pump, which would be even more of a problem.
Jamie?
Through, through, through you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, well.
Go ahead, Gus, go ahead.
Through the chair, to Marcelle, can we restrict what they do to the outside if we were to sell, or we lose all rights?
No, no, there's, there's actually preservation restriction you can put on the exterior of a place, uh, but, uh, these things are not without their own challenges. Uh, somebody gets in, gets in over their head, the work's not progressing, uh, and perhaps they've been moved in, which is even worse, so now they're in there, and even if you cut language, it's their residence and you can't get them out. Uh, so, not that it can't be done, but it's challenging.
Jamie? Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. So to answer Councilor Plagary's questions, I mean, you could do an RFP, like we did with the Red Brick Schoolhouse a few years ago. Um, I, I don't think it has, it might, I could be wrong, I don't think it has any actual value. You're selling it for a buck, because the person who's buying it is going to take on these sets of restrictions, some of which Mark just described as a preservation restriction, which means you have to find somebody who is either gonna invest millions of dollars of their own private capital into a home, which is hard, um, or two, I think, to, to Gus's point, you're finding someone who wants to go in on the labor of love and, um, who's, can do the free labor and incrementally make it better, um, but, you know, those are negotiation points. I mean, if it's somebody's home, you know, what do you do inside? What do you regulate? You know, and, and so really, you're doing that for the visual access, I think, from the exterior and, um, but we could do an RFP and see if there's any, anybody who takes the, who takes it.
Jamie, I remember when we spoke about this, we couldn't put any restrictions on the, what they were doing on the inside.
That's right.
But we could do the restrictions on the outside, certainly.
That's correct.
So I think that gives them a little bit more, um, interest in doing. We just have to decide to do something. I don't want to see that building just fall down. And that's what's gonna happen.
Yep.
That's what's gonna happen. So perhaps you have to first check the, the beetles. I would hope that we've been checking that since 2020 to see what's going on down there. Are they holding parties and all?
You know, I don't know what...
We did have everything exterminated and spent some time.
Good.
Money, getting rid of them and didn't successfully get rid of them at that point. I haven't been down in that crawl space for quite a while. These guys were down in that crawl space, the structural engineers when they were there, and they didn't mention anything except for the fact that they'd been, they'd all been eaten at least ten years prior to now.
Okay.
I remember Paul Compton going down there, and he had said too, that they would need all new of the, new beams or, you know, whatever, like that. He said that really wasn't a big to-do. That could be done, so. All right, that's it for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Frangello.
Few thoughts, a few questions.
Young guy looking for a house?
I know, I know. I didn't think that.
Just a thought, Councilor Frangello.
Just to put into a building. Man, I don't have the carpentry skills, unfortunately. But I, a few things, I mean, is there a potential use for it? Like, I, I do see, uh, you know, similar to how we found, um, a use for, um, Red Brick Schoolhouse, and I think this even has, you know, a, a larger use. There are a lot of towns around us that have an attractive, um, old building that has a venue space, uh, for, for different venues. The big, uh, restriction in that, you know, and why, why we wouldn't pour money, uh, into it is there's no parking, right? There's zero parking. What, what are the opportunities for parking, if any, next to it or across the street or that?
On the grass like they always did.
The old grass, okay.
Jamie might have an answer.
Through, yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. They're gonna end up on Colt Road, and you guys are gonna get complaints. Um, and it's, it's gonna be a situation where we've looked at what you can actually cram on there. It's less than an acre, so you're starting out at that, at that point, and, um, you'd have, the town would end up having to work out a parking deal with some other abutter or someone else. And I think that, whether it's right or wrong, I think people just don't want to walk that far to get to someplace. The other issue is ADA accessibility, I think, which is addressed in the report, Mike.
Yes.
Um, and that also complicates, complicates the visual, uh, exterior, because like the Red Brick Schoolhouse, to make them completely familiar to ADA, you'd have to do ramps around it, and it would kind of hurt, uh, the vista, if you will, or, or the picturesque shot that people are looking for.
The problem, uh, Councilor Frangello, with the traffic coming out on the Washington Street is it's right on a curve, and you just have no vision coming up if you were taking a right from the church, uh, or from the museum. It's a real problem coming out on the Washington Street.
Yeah. It's been a while. I'm picturing a, an open, grassy space across the street, like directly across the street, but, you know, obviously someone's private property.
Yeah.
You know, whether we could, we could purchase. Uh, the other question was, um, how difficult, and, and you, you may laugh, because I, I really have no concept of how difficult it is, but how difficult is it to move such a facility, um, and to, to abandon the foundation, but keep the, you know, sort of the walls and structure and then find a new site?
I can't wait to hear this answer.
And actually, to answer your question about the, um, the parking, you have to put a septic in, and you're gonna lose square footage. So that's, you know, there's no sewer down there, although is there sewer on Colt Road?
I think you can get a, you could get.
You think we could gra- yeah, I didn't even think of that, that that's, that's a possibility. You might save a little bit of square feet, square footage, but...
Two whole parking places.
Yeah. But Home Coal is a company out of North Park, Rhode Island, that used to move homes, and everybody that's of my age here, um, knows that company, but they're out of business now, and to get a, a house moved or a building moved nowadays, um, it's a great question, and, and do we want to partake in something like that? You gotta, then you gotta remodel it too, so it's...
I think the last house that was moved, moved next door to me.
Yeah. Yeah. You're right.
From Gorilic Farms out to Washington Street.
Yeah. Anyways, uh, just, and then the, the last thing is, I, I love the idea of, you know, if, if we're looking for, you know, young carpenters for the flavor of love type thing, then I love the idea of, of going to Tri-County. And, and, and the good thing with that is money, like, i- investments that we, that we put into it just allow us to sell it later at a, at a higher, um, price, you know? Like, it's not lost, you know? It just raises the value, uh, of the investment. And so having it be this, like, slow, you know, semester by semester project for, um, a high school in town, um, to me, sounds like a very attractive idea. And then we can sell it, you know, when we need to, or if we need to.
I think you would.
I think the best, to, see, if you could, if you could sell it for a buck to somebody that wanted to work on it, that change is what has to be put in it. So right now, for it to be used by the public, you really need to make it accessible. To be used by a person or a family.
Got it.
That takes a whole lot of those things off the table. And, you know, a lot of these, it being a church and an assembly space is a very different set of codes and things. It would be a house, I mean, people wouldn't have to do the ramps and the handicap bathrooms and all that other stuff. That would probably be a more ideal scenario, that somebody could turn it into a home and work on it, um, because it would take a lot of these costs away. We could never use it as a public, you know? I mean, you'd be spending a, an absolute fortune when there's so many other things in town that you need. I mean, I don't think it's really, this place is worth that kind of an investment in its current condition. I mean, if, if it wasn't there, if somebody moved it, I mean, you could put a playground there or something that's, you know, there's a batch of houses behind it, maybe it could be something like that, but, um...
Well said, Councilor Frangello.
Yeah.
Counselor Jones?
Mike, you just stated exactly what I was just gonna say. Mr. Chairman, in light of all the many other interests we have in the community to put into investments, I really don't see putting any further investment into this piece of property and the building itself. It's just really and truly not worth our investment money. There's so many other things in the community that we, we, we could better spend our investment dollars, taxpayers' money on than the building. I know the building well. Gus, we've been talking about this for, oh, yes, since I've been on here, what to do with this piece of property. It has been sitting and sitting and sitting and sitting and sitting and rotting for years. And I, Deb, I agree with you. An RFP, putting it out to the public for, I don't, I really don't care if we give it away for a dollar. I just don't see us, I just don't see the logic in us investing even another hundred bucks into making this property any more improved than it already is.
Kind of a smaller scale, new style, that kind of just sits out there.
Yes, it's just, yes, not nearly as contaminated.
Not, not contaminated, but that kind of thing.
So yes, you could say that.
Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, um, to Gus, I like the idea of Tri-County as, as does Councilor Frangello to help out, but, um, I was just wondering if there's any interest with the CPC to, for a project for housing, like we, some kind of...
Jamie?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, the, the, this pro- it's like I'm saying a project, but this property will be referenced in the first iteration of the CPA plan as a potential project or idea to consider. Even if you did 10% of revenues every year, it would still take the town approximately 10 to 15 years at best to raise the money to rehab it on its own. It could also be used, funds could be used in a rehab or partnership attempt, um, with a nonprofit or some other things. Um, but, you know, a lot of competing interests. Um, they, they have been to the facility to at least, uh, look at it like all the other ones, so, um, it certainly qualifies.
Okay, I was just wondering if, um, and you answered my question, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Deloco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. They, they would have to put a foundation in that, wouldn't they, to get rid of the, to get rid of those beams under there?
Through the chairs, um, Councilor Deloco, um, it's a, got a granite foundation, and we believe that that foundation is solid.
Oh, okay.
And fine, so we'll not need any, uh, further use. The, the problem is access, accessibility into that crawl space. Uh, there might have to be some of the, of the granite removed from the side to allow for easier access into the crawl space, but we believe that that is a viable option.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I kind of agree with Counselor Jones. I mean, we get a lot of other things out there. I mean, Tri-County's good, but those people working on it now, by the time they're finished, they'll be collecting social security. I mean, there's a lot of work down there.
There is a lot, for sure. All set? Counselor Call me a ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And through you, I, I'm not sure if this is a question for Jamie or to our presenters, but I know oftentimes when gifts are made or when land changes hands, sometimes there's use restrictions placed on the gift. Does anything like that exist with this particular parcel, that the donors that gave it to the town said you've got to do X, Y, Z with it, or else it reverts back? Is there any restrictions like that on this at all?
They gave up that right when we offered it back to them.
Okay.
Twenty years ago, fifteen years ago.
No, I, I think that's important to know.
Yeah, oh, no, absolutely.
You know, so...
I heard that there is.
But they, that, that restriction was in there originally, and then we tried to give it back and they said no, then that restriction.
Okay, so it truly is now just a, a, something the town owns and can do anything it wants with?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Attorney Sorrell?
Yeah, the, the language that was in the document was, was not particularly, uh, tight legal language, and so it was what it was, and we exercised the town's obligations they're under as indicated by the chair.
Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. In that report, if you read the, the history, I mean, it's just incredible, the history of that, uh, building and what it was used for. So what I was thinking of, after we go through all this stuff, if we don't find anybody for it, could we just keep the outside as just historic? Do you know what I mean? Just fix up the outside, just so when people drive by for the next hundred years, we know that that was the, the church, the meeting house, so no one goes in it, so you don't have to do any ADA, any, anything, but it looks historic and we know what it was for all those years in South Franklin, where they didn't want to travel to the center on their horses, and they, it was their, you know, their meeting house. it was their, you know, their meeting house. And, I mean, could we just keep it so people know that that was there forever?
Through the chair, these are all great ideas, by the way, and, you know, that's a viable option too. However, the floor, if you have to go in there and do any maintenance, um, and that floor gives way, someone could get injured.
Yeah, I don't know if you just keep it propped up forever. No, I'm just, I, I can't sell it. I don't, I don't wanna see it just get torn down.
I know, it's history.
Yeah, thanks. That's what I'm getting at, just any outside box start on.
Counselor Chandler, if you, if anyone wants my personal opinion, I know I probably shouldn't give it, but I'm gonna do it anyways.
Yeah.
Sell it. And, and get it off, get it off your hands because you've gotta have a use. If someone had a great use for it, I'm sorry to be opinionated on this, but we know this building well. And I don't know that I'm in the minority with saying this, but you sell it, you get somebody that has a labor of love for it and, you know, if it's, if it turns into unaffordable, um, even better. Um, I don't know if you could do that, would you could. So it's be kind of a, I think a win-win for the town. You put restrictions on it so that they can't, you know, dabble with the outside.
For it the way I was thinking.
Then it's off our books.
Well, we, we, I just thought.
We've, we've ran this around the Mulberry Bush for years, and what to do.
Jamie.
Through Mr. Chair, just to, just to come full circle with Counselor Chandler's idea, yeah, to Mark's point earlier, even if you did sell it, you can sell it with a preservation restriction and you could augment that with, say, and I'm just making up a number, a hundred and thousand dollars for paint and maybe some wood replacement if that was something, if the facade was something that people wanted to really own in. When you sold it in the RFP, we would declare in that, Counselor Chandler, and say, these, these are the conditions that we have. There are very few. We're looking for the preservation of the exterior. There'll be a preservation restriction incumbent upon that, um, and the CPC or whoever could, could, you know, look at appropriation to the waiting, to the, to the bidder that comes in and presents the best vision. So I just wanted to give you some level of comfort that you, you know, even if we didn't do anything on the inside, you can still do that on the outside. And that could take a long time for somebody to rehabilitate, but you never know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler.
Gus, Gus. Through the chair, and, um, Counselor Plegory, I know that might not be what you want because I know it pulls on your heartstrings to sell a building like that, but if, if we had a use for it, I'm all for what you suggest. But, and I know it has to come through the full council as to what the decision. The use is what I'm, we can't wrap our heads around what that use would be. And I'm sure we're open, everyone's open to suggestions too, so.
I agree with just what you said. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't think that it's a good idea to get the Tri County involved because again, we don't know what we wanna do with it, right? Um, I think that if we can direct Jamie to do an R, do we do an RFP for this, to sell it?
Disposition of surplus property, right, Mark?
It, it depends what you, what you wanna do.
I wanna sell it to someone, yes.
Are you looking for a proposal to rehabilitate or something? That determines whether you go with an invitation to bid or an RFP. There are variations on a theme.
Okay, the easiest thing, to let someone come forward to purchase this building, to be able to keep the outside facade, you know, up to, fix that up, okay? Um, and for it not to cost us any money to do that. Let this person that comes in, I don't care if we sell it for a dollar. I mean, really, let's face it, this is history in Franklin. We wanna keep it. There's not many buildings like that. And for people to go buy it and say, oh, my goodness, this was the South Franklin Congregational Meeting House back in 1800s. Um, that's what I wanna see. I wanna see a plaque out there and let people live the way they want inside and let them take care of things. They don't have to do what we would have to do for the town as far as ADA requirements, uh, and all this other stuff. They don't have to do that. It's a private home now with just the restrictions on the outside. Wait a minute, he's trying to say something.
I was, Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say also prevailing wage, you know, when the town doesn't have to get into prevailing wage, that saves you 30.
They wouldn't have to do prevailing wage either. You know, you'd be surprised. You may get some people, volunteers out there that would help, uh, a family that wants to renovate and do this whole thing over. I know we couldn't do that because we tried to get somebody in there to paint and to do kinda re, uh, construction, but it was told that we just couldn't do it over there. Let's not get rid of it, I beg of you. Don't get rid of the building. Let's try this and not let it end tonight. Let's do it. Let's get this paperwork going, uh, and not wait another few years because it's only gonna go and deteriorate even more.
You got your three-minute clock. You just got beeped. Uh, and I think, uh, my opinion is, uh, would be, why not try the RFP re, approach first? And if we were not successful requesting a proposal, then go out for an invitation to bid. Attorney Sorel.
Uh, Mr. Chair, to the chair. Uh, so, uh, there's, there's been success stories and there's been horror stories here. And the, the driver is getting a successful responder that's got the wherewithal and the experience to do it. The, uh, the starry-eyed new homeowners that wanna take it over, sometimes they succeed and a lot of times they don't. On the other hand, there's established nonprofits, there's contractors, there's others that have the ability to stabilize it and make, and make sure that you are actually gonna preserve it instead of it turning into a disaster that's compounded by the fact that you've now got a family living in there under non-habitable condition.
I guess my thought, my thought process here was if we go out for an RFP, people are gonna have to put proposals together, together to submit to us and we get an opportunity to review them, see what their ideas are, what their thoughts are. And when we put out the RFP, we just put the few restrictions that we want in, in there and tell them that they, that has to be incorporated into their proposal. And we can say no to all of them. Uh, and then if we got to the point where we just wanna get rid of it, then you just go out with an invitation to bid on it and sell it for whatever.
The most, that covers everything, the most.
Okay.
I think that's an option.
I think they, I, I think Jamie has an idea as to what we're looking for and let's let them, uh, talk with the team, uh, and Mark and let's see if we can put something together to put out there. Cause I, I agree with Counselor Plegory. I'm glad she asked for this to be put back on an agenda so that we have an opportunity and we're, it's time to do something, uh, what, whatever that is. And this is a, a good first step, I believe.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on. Uh, subcommittee reports, uh.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Gus, Michael, thank you. Uh, I think the only subcommittee that's met is EDC and they just met earlier this evening, so.
We did, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, the EDC plus committee met, um, and we discussed more of the Franklin for All project. Wanna get everybody thinking about the public forum. That's gonna be on March 7th at 7:00 PM. You could go to the high school or you could zoom in. We're gonna talk about the downtown zoning project, what would you like to see there? We need people to actually give us their opinions and see, learn zoning 101, what changes in zoning, actually make changes in what we look at and how we live downtown. So, um, that, that again is March 7th at 7:00 PM. Please come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Uh, okay, moving on, legislation for action. Resolution 22 dash 07, creation of the Joint Budget Subcommittee. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 22 dash 07, creation of the Joint Budget Subcommittee. Whereas it has been determined to be the town's interest to establish a Joint Budget Subcommittee here and after the sub, Subcommittee, whose purpose will be to promote communication and collaboration during the town's annual operating budget process. Now therefore be resolved that the Joint Budget Subcommittee hereafter Subcommittee is hereby established. The Subcommittee's responsibilities shall include promoting collaboration among the three most relevant finance-related committees who are involved in the town's annual operating budget process, Town Council, School Committee, and Finance Committee. Promoting broader communication and public engagement on the town, town's annual operating budget and keeping their respective board or committee members informed of the Subcommittee's work and provide updates. Meeting at least once a year during the annual budget process to achieve the responsibilities of Subcommittee. Meeting as often as necessary to achieve Subcommittee goals. Maintaining institutional knowledge of short and long-range budget forecasts and assisting the town administrator and superintendent to schools to develop strategies for meeting projected budget shortfalls. And serving as an ombuds, ombudsman to the town's annual operating budget process. Membership of the Subcommittee shall consist, consist of four members of the Town Council, who shall be four members appointed by the Town Council Budget Subcommittee, four members of the School Committee, who shall be the three members appointed to the School Committee Budget Subcommittee, and four members of the Finance Committee, who shall be the four members appointed to the Finance Committee Operating Budget Subcommittee. Four. Memberships shall be based on the procedures outlined by each individual board that comprises the Subcommittee and Subcommittee shall be advisory only and will not supersede any legal obligations under Massachusetts general law or within the Massa, uh, Franklin Town Charter or Town Code. Resolution should become effective according to provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 22 dash 07.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the rest of the council. Um, as folks also recall, this is another goal, uh, on the council's agenda from a couple of weeks ago. Um, and what we're trying to do here is give, uh, a little bit of, um, life, if you will, uh, to the Joint Budget Subcommittee. I think in the past, since I've been here for the seven cycles, um, you know, sometimes they met, sometimes they didn't. I think, um, I've gotten a lot of feedback from the public that sometimes they don't know exactly what maybe is going on in the budget. And this is an opportunity to, um, to at least be able to talk about it a little bit more publicly. Uh, but yet, as, as, uh, Counselor Jones read in the resolution, it doesn't usurp any charter provisions, any Town Code or any other general law requirements like the budget hearings for the council and the Finance Committee. Um, so ultimately, I, I think the words in here hopefully summarize it best. I don't wanna rehash what Counselor Jones just said, but, um, we did go to the Finance Committee and they did unanimously approve this and thought it was a good idea. And I believe the school, in talking to the School Committee, Budget Subcommittee, uh, they agree. So, um, before you tonight, this is it. Thank you.
Okay, questions or comments from the council? Saying none? Oh, Kobe.
If I could just.
Counselor Frangello.
Yeah, thank you. Um, through, if I could just mark like why this is important and I wanna really commend you for, for bringing this forward. I, I think that this past election we saw, you know, record voter turnout, um, a, a lot of changes to School Committee and some changes to Town Council. A lot of this, uh, excitement and interest in paying attention to town was based in the, the residents wanting to feel like they have a say in the process over, you know, uh, investing in their own education system. And this is that first step, uh, toward providing us an opportunity to look deeper into the school budget and see, uh, opportunities for us to, to invest more. So I, I wanna commend you for bringing this forward. I think it's the first step of many, um, that really starts to help right the ship in town in terms of us properly investing, uh, in our education system.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Any other counselors? And just, we have had the, this committee.
For years.
For years. What we've, what we're trying to now do is formalize it to a greater extent.
Yes.
Okay, all right, just wanted to be clear. Okay, any further discussion? Any comments from the audience? Okay, vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 22 dash 07. Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Resolution 22 dash 08, adoption of revisions to the Procedures Manual of the Franklin Town Council. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 22 dash 08, adoption of revisions to the Procedures Manual of the Franklin Town Council, whereas by Resolution 2167, the Town Council, the Town of Franklin adopted the Procedures Manual of the Franklin Town Council hereafter Procedures Manual. And whereas the Town Council established a Subcommittee to review the Procedures Manual and to recommend revisions, and it has been done so, which, which revisions are incorporated in the revised Procedures Manual dated February 2nd, 2022, attached here to as Exhibit 1. Now therefore be resolved that the revised Procedures Manual of the Franklin Town Council dated February 2nd, 2022, attached here to as Exhibit 1, is hereby duly adopted and shall be effective until further revised or revoked by Resolution in the Town Council. Resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 22 dash 08.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I think prior to the meeting, um, I think that was the third meeting of the group, maybe fourth, uh, where the folks got together and went through the changes. The track changes version was in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, from the council.
Well, uh, you know, I think it's important enough because this is our Procedures Manual. I think it's important enough that we should, uh, just quickly go through the changes that we've made to the Procedures Manual. And since I chaired that committee, Subcommittee, uh, the first, uh, change was, uh, page four, where a member of the council, in his or her public relations with members of the public, community stakeholders, town boards and committees, elected officials and fellow counselors, should A, lead by example in promoting civility and respect for all residents and businesses within the Town of Franklin when utilizing any means of contact with the general public, including but not limited to in-person constituent services, social media channels, as well as while conducting official town business as outlined in the Franklin Home Rule Charter and Procedures Manual of the Franklin Town Council. B, recognize that our community is proud to stand as a welcoming and accepting community to all and will act in appropriate ways to implement that standard across our community. C, encourage all residents and visitors to celebrate and practice civility and to respect the diversity of each other's backgrounds and to learn from one another. D, value all members of this community, including all religions and faiths, ancestries, ethnicities, socio-economic status, disability, sexual orientation or gender identity. E, reject not only discrimination, harassment, bullying, or any hate-based acts, but also to reject prejudice and bigotry in all forms. And take this opportunity to reinforce our commitment being a, being a diverse, supportive and inclusive community. The next change, the next change was on page five, uh, under three, quorum, uh, and a quorum of the Town Council should, shall consist of majority of its members. If at any time a meeting is called to order or if, uh, during a meeting appears to chair or another member that less than a quorum present, the chair shall declare a recess of not. a recess of not more than 20 minutes. The 20 minutes is what's been changed, after which time, if a quorum is not present, the meeting will be adjourned. The next change is under Citizens' Comments, where the timeframe has gone from five minutes to three minutes. Also, under Citizens' Comments, we added four sentences, might be in question. In the chair's sound discretion. That might be in question. Citizens may present who wish to speak on an agenda item, may do so after all counselors who wish to speak on the item have spoken. So that's, the only piece we added in there was in the chair's sound discretion. Then, the next item was in Vote Requirements, in number 16, we took out for other actions requiring a bylaw, see Chapter 271, because it doesn't matter anymore. It's irrelevant. And next, in the same category, in case of tie-in votes, we scratched the word "any." In case of a tie in votes on a proposed, on proposed, the proposed shall be considered defeated. Legislation, sorry. The proposed legislation. So in case of a tie in votes on proposed legislation, the proposed legislation shall be considered defeated. And that kind of just clears up, clarifies that paragraph in our Procedures Manual. The next one is passage of a zoning bylaw, and we added the word generally requires two-thirds vote of the council, except as stated in statute, e.g., multifamily housing. And that's a state.
That was a recent amendment to the zoning statute.
Okay. So again, a lot, some of these changes in our Procedures Manual is bringing it up to mass general laws that have changed since the last revision. Okay, the next one is on page eight, Resubmission. And that's when any legislation for action, and that's the new phrase, legislation for action, has been finally rejected by the council, no motion embodying substantially the same subject shall be presented to the council within six months of its previous writing for submission. So we just added the words legislation for action. And in the same resubmission subtitle here, in the next paragraph, we got rid of the word "only." A zoning bylaw which is voted down may not be reconsidered within two years unless the planning board makes a recommendation to do so. We took out the word "only." And then a 19 sponsor absence. In the event that the sponsoring member of any order, resolution, or other matter is not present, when the clerk reads said matter, the chair may instruct the clerk to withdraw said matter for consideration at that meeting. Prior, it said "shall," and we changed "shall" to "may." And 21, written proposals, a proposed bylaws, orders, and resolutions shall be in writing. And we took out and shall bear the name of the sponsor. It's because most of the bylaws come from the administration, there's no reason to have the administration as the sponsor. So we took that and shall bear the name of the sponsor out. So it just says, all proposed bylaws, orders, and resolutions shall be in writing. And 23, we have, we added under K, oh, we added J, Town Administrator's Report, followed by K, Subcommittee, and we added ad hoc committees. So Subcommittee Reports as well as ad hoc Committees. And then we just changed the M to Read Counselor Comments. It just said Council Comments before. So that's just a language change. Then, the chair may take legislation for action out of order if the legislation relates to a hearing or licensed transaction. We just put, added that to the rules and regs because there are times when we have a public hearing, we have people here, and the agenda might be long with, you know, presentations and so forth. So it allows the chair to take legislation for action out of order in order to deal with it at the same time, right after the hearing, so that we could excuse those people, and they wouldn't have to sit around all night. And then, further down, we eliminated only privileged motions to adjourn, to recess, personal privilege, or orders of the day shall be made during. We took that out, and we've clarified the paragraph by saying during. Counselor comments, council members shall not discuss any matter not included on the meeting agenda, except that an individual council member may take statements and comments on topics that are in the general community's interest or announce community events and activities of community interest. A council member may also request action or an answer from the town administrator on a matter brought to their attention by a resident or stakeholder in Franklin. The council and town administrator shall not engage in any dialogue in order to prevent an infraction of the open meeting law. And then, 24 hearings, all public hearings before the council shall have a 7:00 PM posted hearing time, and we changed that from 7:10 because sometimes we get to hearings on the agenda, and it's only 7:05. So by setting it at 7:00, it gives us the opportunity to deal with them immediately as they come up. Remember, hearings can't be opened before the time slot that they've been posted for, but they can open after. So this just allows us to continue them in your proper order. Okay, then, when the chair is satisfied that the matter has received, again, this is in public hearings, public hearing format, and it lists the order. But when the chair is satisfied that the matter has received a full hearing, the chair may declare the hearing closed in the absence of opposition thereto. Otherwise, the chair shall call for a motion to close the public hearing, and the council shall act thereon. So in other words, if a hearing, we think is pretty much gone through all, everything, all the pertinent information, I can just close, or the chair can just close the hearing without asking for a vote, unless there's opposition from the council. If there's opposition from the council, it would go to a vote. Okay, subcommittees of council, members of any subcommittee, including the chair and vice chair, shall be appointed by the chair of the council in consultation with the town administrator. But that's okay. And we eliminate-
Not a big fan about that.
The town administrator. Right. Appointments to subcommittees of council is made by the chair consultation. So that just clears up some language in that. It's nothing different. Nothing really has changed. Excuse me. 26, ad hoc committees. The members of any ad hoc committee, including the chair, including the chair and vice chair, shall be appointed by the chair in consultation with the town administrator. We included the including the chair and vice chair to match the same wording that we have in subcommittees of the council. Okay, subcommittee and ad hoc committees, the chair of, or vice chair, we'll call it vice chair, of a subcommittee or ad hoc committee may give reports on the activity of a committee to the full council at a town council meeting as provided on an agenda. And we got rid of the rest of that paragraph. So it just basically says that either the chair or vice chair of the subcommittee can give the report. And we eliminated the reliving from further consideration because of that. Mark.
So that whole section there just did not reflect the actual practice of the council. So that was antiquated. We took it out for that reason.
Again, this was something that early on, I think it was one of the things that I talked about in the very first meeting after the election, was that we were going to go through the rules and regs in Procedures Manual and try and update it and get it as updated as we possibly can. And the next, the next ones, 30 became 29, 31 became 30 because we eliminated a group, 32 became 31, and 33, 32, 34, 33, 35, 34. Oh, I'm sorry. In 34, 33, open meeting laws, we eliminated the word chair because it's by statute, any votes taken in executive session must be a roll-call vote. So that's not something the chair can ask. It's automatic. Spectator decorum. Guests will be allowed in the gallery of the council chamber when the council is in session. No demonstrations or approval or disapproval from guests shall be permitted, and if such demonstrations are made, the individual, we changed from the entire gallery, individual or individuals may be ordered to be removed from the gallery by the chair. And remote participation, we took a long, we took a long look at this one, and we, under A, we eliminated, be limited to one. We changed it to up to four members per meeting on a first-come, first-served basis, provided that a minimum quorum of five members will be physically present. B, requiring two, requiring 20, or two hour, we changed it from 28, or-
Eight hours.
Eight hours to two hours. So we, a two-hour notice be given to the chair and to Town Administrator's Office or as soon as practicable. C, be limited to the use in the council chambers and the municipal building third-floor training room. So we could have a meeting in the third-floor training room. We eliminated shall not be allowed by subcommittees, and we eliminated shall not be allowed during executive sessions. And then we changed to D, if a technical problems interrupt remote participation, the chair will wait up to five minutes to allow for the reconnection prior to resuming the meeting. And lastly, 37 became 36. And those were the changes. Sorry for the lengthy, but I think it was important for the audience to hear some of the changes that we are being proposed tonight. So with that, we have further discussion. Counselor Hamblin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just, I just wanted to thank the subcommittee for adding number four to the role of the Franklin Town Council, which, to remind people, is how the town council, a town council should behave in public relations with members of the public, community stakeholders, town boards, committees. I'm only going to read the top line. Don't worry. Elected officials and fellow counselors. So I just wanted to thank you for adding that to this. I think this is very important, and that should be taken very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Any other questions or comments from Counselor Frangello?
Yeah.
I was an almost hand up.
I was getting there.
You were getting there, okay.
One is also to mark the importance of number four and the language I particularly appreciate because it puts a charge out to all the residents, is that the counselor recognizes that our community is proud to stand as a welcoming and accepting community, which is a statement on Franklin as a whole. The only one question I had was, and this is, in the chair's sound discretion, is there some backing to that? Like, what would not sound discretion?
Go ahead, Mark.
So we need some clarification because there's some confusion here. We have charter language that encourages participation. That's a local thing. It's not a state statute. The open meeting law allows people to be present to listen, but it does not give them a right, spectators a right to participate. That's coming from the local level, and we wanted to make sure that there was discretion in the chair as to the implementation of that. We have had people kind of abuse it in the past in reference to charter language that they have a right to speak, and this makes it clear that that's not an unfettered right. The meeting is always within the sound discretion of the chair as to how it runs.
Okay. No, that's helpful. Yeah, thank you.
Outside, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the other things that came out of the subcommittee's discussions upon review of these rules and regulations is, this wasn't a change, but this was something that actually was in our document, that from this point forward, as part of my duties as clerk, is going to be enforced on our next council meeting, and that is line number 31 for debate limitations, which states that no member shall speak more than once on a question when another member who has not spoken plans the floor, and no member speaking shall without his consent be interrupted by another except on a point of order. A member may speak upon a matter for no more than three minutes at a time. A counselor may yield all or part of his or her time to another counselor, and the member who has not spoken on a matter shall have priority and recognition by the chair. The clerk of the council shall enforce- chair. The clerk of the council shall inform the chair whenever a member has spoken longer than three minutes.
And hence, and hence, that's where we took the three minute and changed the citizens' comments from five minutes to three minutes. If we're, why are we only allowed three minutes? And citizens' comments, five. So, that's why it was changed from five to three. Counselor Plegory?
I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, that I think it was great that you read it all off, because there were only three of us for this subcommittee, and it's so important for the rest of you to read through this and see what our rules and regulations are. Perhaps maybe the new ones didn't even know this existed, but to read it, and you'll, and you'll see. Have to memorize it. You're not being tested, but it is seen.
I'm a mess.
You might be.
You're looking right at me. I'm like, I'll memorize it if you want.
I did, yes. Okay. No, but thank you for reading through. I think that was very helpful to everyone.
Thank you, Counselor Plegory. Any other que, Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no, thank you guys for all going through that. That was some, a few good changes. I know a couple counselors spoke to number four, which I'm all in favor of, too. That's great. But since, you know, I don't always love authority, so I'm going to say this. There's, you, I see the social media. You're not telling people what to do, or there's no censoring. There's the same thing, no teeth. It's just, you should abide by this. So, that's nice and easy. Because I think, I remember the last time we tried to do something like this, some of the, the residents thought Jamie was able to fire us. I mean, you remember that situation?
Yeah.
And you handled it very well, by the way.
You remember that.
And obviously, we cannot be fired. So, I just wanted people to remember that at home, because that was a big thing that went on, you know?
Oh, can you tell my boss that?
Okay.
Thank you. I'll say, Counselor Chandler.
You're getting a pay cut. You're getting a pay cut for that one, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Cormier-Ledger?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this hard work and for all of the language clarifications, especially for us new people to the council. Counselor Plegory, it's very helpful. Just more of a clarification thing, more for consistency. In some places, we've got, like on page thirteen, we say a counselor may yield all or part of his or her time, but then above it, a few sentences, we don't use the language his or her, we only use his. So, I'm just wondering if we should be consistent throughout the document and say his or her?
Jamie?
Simple answer is yes, and when we go finalize it, I'll do a replace search and make sure we capture all the spots in Microsoft Word.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier-Ledger. Anybody else? Anyone in the audience?
We knew this was coming.
Of course. Just name and address, please, Jane.
Jane Callaway-Trippe, 607 Maple Street. First, I have a question. On the citizens' comment section, where it says you can use your discretion as chair, or any chair, to not allow citizens to respond during agenda items. I guess my concern is if, if, and I know it's not a state law, it's a town thing, but we're trying to encourage town people to get involved. If they're coming for a specific agenda item, and then they're finding out they're not allowed to speak, how are they being heard? They're not. They're being ignored, or they're being silenced. So, I get what you're saying, but I think that on agenda items, if it's an open meeting and it's not executive session, residents should have a right to voice their opinion, because otherwise they're not really being involved. Do you want to say something before I continue?
No, no, go ahead.
The second thing is the three minutes.
Yeah.
As far as citizens' comments, I understand also what you said, that if you're only allowing you guys three minutes, we should only get three minutes. Well, we do only get three minutes when we're speaking on an agenda item. Citizens' comments is five minutes, because it's the only chance residents have to come up and explain something that's a problem, a concern, a congratulatory speech to something that you guys might have done. It's the only time for us to get it on the record if it's not on an agenda item. And since we can't put things on the agenda item, those five minutes are precious. So, two meetings a month, and I'm at them, ten minutes of me being allowed to speak a month to tell you what I think, feel, or my opinion, really isn't that big of a deal. And let's be real, there's not like this fifty people standing here at the meetings that all want to talk for five minutes, and if that was the case, I could see we're going to reduce it this week, because we got a lot of people. But I deserve those ten minutes. I have a right to get something on the record. I can't really email you, because even if I email you as a group, by law, you can't respond. I know this, because it goes to Mr. Helen, and then he responds. And I understand that. But if I'm trying to address you nine, I need those five minutes. And we all know that I have a hard enough time staying within the five minutes. So, now to reduce it to three, look at tonight, we had a gentleman who, for the first time, came up to speak, and he struggled trying to keep it in the five minutes. I don't think that it should be reduced. Agenda items, keep it at three. It'll be equal with every one of you. But for citizens' comments, we deserve those five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Counselor Jones? Oh, Counselor Delug?
Jane, you can always just call me. You don't have to worry. You don't have to, you don't have to call everybody. Just call me, and I'll talk to you for half an hour if you want.
Can I understand that? I do, because I'm a warranty. I understand that, and for that, I am grateful. And in the past, I have reached out to different people, not recently, but I have. And I get that. But there are times when I want to be able to come up here if I have a serious problem, and I know I can call you, and I know I could call coun, counselor, I always call you Tom, so I can't think your last name.
That's okay. It's close enough.
I know I've called, like, I've even spoken in the past. I've talked to Counselor Hamblin. And I know that I can do that, and that's great, and it's great for all the residents to be able to do that. But sometimes, you need to actually have something put on the record. And if you don't have, and, and there's a lot of information that you're trying to get out, and it's hard enough to scramble it into five minutes, that's a problem. And there's certain things that need to be put on the record, or the rest of the town who may be watching or zoomed in or here should be listening to, too, because it might spark them saying, you know what? We have the same concern. Maybe I should reach out. How are you nine supposed to represent every resident in this town and do your jobs if you don't know what the issues are? You can't. A plumber can't go in and fix a plum, a plumbing problem if they don't want, know what the plumbing problem is. Just to say, hey, my bathroom's not working, okay, well, I don't know what to bring for parts. It's the same idea. Those five minutes shouldn't be changed. We only get three minutes on an agenda item. That's fine. I've never argued with that. I wish we had more, but we don't. But taking away two minutes out of that citizens' comments, those two minutes may not seem like a lot, but those two minutes are huge. And when you're sitting here, and people's voices are supposed to matter, and I know, because it was my slogan, and I also know a bunch of people that have been using it, so it means something. If our voices matter, then don't take it away and keep us with the five minutes. Leave the agenda items at three.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. The vote will come on the motion to, un, excuse me. The vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 22-08. A majority vote's required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 22-09, gift acceptance, senior center. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 22-09, acceptance of gift, senior center, whereas the senior center has received a generous donation in the amount of $1,000 to be used at the discretion of the department as follows. Donation summary, senior center, $1,000. One donation to be applied towards services and programs for senior citizens at the Franklin community. The Busy Bee Club now therefore be resolved that the town council, the town Franklin, on behalf of the senior center gratefully accepts this generous donation to be used at the discretion of the senior center as described above. Resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the town of Franklin Home and Road Charter.
Move Resolution 22-09.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion, Jamie.
Bees are busy and buzzing. I want to thank them for their incredibly generous donation and getting to know those folks while I was down there. It's, it's been very kind, very kind of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor, I'm sorry, to approve Resolution 22-09. Again, a majority vote's required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 22-10. Here it comes again. Cable funds in support of peg service and programming, per Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-three, F. Three-quarters. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 22-10, and this is another appropriation for cable funds in support of peg service and programming, per Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-three, F. Three-quarters. Total amount requested, $36,000. The purpose is to appropriate $36,000 from the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund created out of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-three, F. Three-quarters, representing the amount received from Comcast Cable to be paid to Franklin Cable Access Corporation to support capital equipment expenditures. Motion being moved and voted by the town council, that the sum of $36,000 be appropriate from the Peg Access and Cable Related Funds created out of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-three, F. Three-quarters, to be paid to the Franklin Cable Access Corporation to support capital equipment expenditures. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the town of Franklin Home and Road Charter.
Move Resolution 22-10.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion, Jamie.
It's Groundhog Day.
Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 22-10. Again, a majority vote's required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 22-11, acceptance of private road covenant with owner developer of Smiths Estates, a two-lot subdivision. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 22-11, acceptance of private road covenant with owner developer of Smiths Farm, a two-lot subdivision, whereas the Franklin Planning Board on October fourth, two thousand and four, voted to approve with conditions definitive subdivision plan for two-lot subdivision known as Smiths Estates, which subdivision plan was recorded on Norfolk County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book five forty-three, page ninety-one of two thousand and five. And whereas said vote include conditions that unnamed roadway shown on the above described subdivision plan, together related drainage and utilities be and remain private, and that the private property owners have the exclusive obligation to maintain and repair the same as well as to remove snow therefrom. And whereas Smithsville Farm LLC is the owner of the subject property and has executed a covenant incorporation in foregoing conditions, a true copy of which is attached as exhibit one, now therefore be ordered that the town of Franklin, acting by and through its town council, hereby authorizes the town administrator to execute the covenant, a copy of which is attached here, too, as exhibit one on behalf of the town of Franklin. Resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the town of Franklin Home and Road Charter.
Move Resolution 22-11.
Second.
Motion and second discussion to Mark.
Attorney? Mark?
So, I gave you a memo. This is a fairly common practice with these small subdivisions where, which have primarily had the construction standards waived by the planning board in terms of road construction and related utilities and all the trade-off being that the town basically says, we're not going to be responsible for the road, because it's not, doesn't meet our general requirements. So, in order to make that legally enforceable when private owners buy in, this covenant that's attached gets executed, it's recorded at the registry, it's in the chain of title, puts, puts a potential buyer on notice that the road is private and it's going to be up to them to maintain.
Thank you, Mark. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Cormier-Ledger?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Attorney Sorrell. So, I thought I heard language that said that the developer was responsible, but in reality, the homeowners are responsible because the develop, developer's long gone, right?
Right. It's initially the developer enters into it and has a authority under law to bind his successors, which is a private owner. So, he's basically putting this, it's a, it's considered a common restriction. So, he's, he's entering, he or she, he's entering into this common restriction with the town. It then becomes binding upon everybody in the subsequent chain of title.
But this wouldn't be something new to the people that have already bought homes there? Like, we're not hitting them with a whammy of any kind?
It's not early on. This is raw land at the moment.
Okay.
It hasn't been developed yet.
Okay, because I heard two thousand and four, so I think that's why I got confused.
Exactly. For whatever reason, it sat, that's unusual. It's, it's fairly, it's fairly current, but in this case, it just sat there after it was approved, but nothing's changed. It hasn't been built up.
Okay, so you're seeking our approval for future buyers of these parcels from the developer, so they know it's a private road?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier-Ledger. Questions? Any other questions from the council? From the audience? Zoom in. Okay, since I see no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 22-11. Again, a majority vote's required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 22-12, order of layout, acceptance, and taking of Brandywine Road and a portion of Charles Drive and drainage and utility easements. Again, this is a referral to the planning board. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 22-12, order layout, acceptance, and taking of Brandywine Road and portion of Charles Drive and drainage and utility easements.
Motion to waive the reading?
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor of waiving the reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move Resolution 22-12.
Second.
To the planning board?
Referral to the planning board.
Second.
Motion and a second. Quick summary, Jamie?
So, for everybody at home, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is going to begin a series of street acceptances, again, on the council goals for this year. I just wanted to highlight before the town attorney gives an overview on this one. This is a unique situation where we are referring this road in particular to the planning board for acceptance, and the town attorney will now explain why, but I want to make sure everybody's aware. This is not the traditional process, and not the process that will be used for future street acceptances, which will be coming before you, March, April, May, and the several months ahead that are ready to go. Mark?
So, and all due respect, it is a traditional process, but it's not the one we're using moving forward. So, as any of you who have been here for a while know, we have a huge backlog of subdivision roads from the uncontrolled construction in the eighties and nineties. We got special legislation, a home rule petition, that allows an expedited process for acceptance of those roads. Otherwise, you have to, by default, go back to a statute that's been on the books since the eighteen hundreds. It was never intended to address subdivisions as opposed to actually laying out public ways that went from point A to point B, where subdivisions really just provide access and frontage. So, we attempted actually earlier last, toward the end of the last legislative term, to use that procedure, the expedited procedure, but that requires actually planning board approval, because it's predicated upon subdivisions. Although this is a subdivision, there's a long history here. I won't go into it. However, it was not approved under the subdivision control law by the planning board, but rather as a forty-B project by the zoning board of appeals. So, the planning board, when they got this, declined to take- So, the planning board, when they got this, declined to take action. So, we couldn't, we couldn't, uh, employ the expedited, uh, statutory process, the home rule petition. So, now we've gone back to the traditional legislation here, which is a referral to the planning board. It doesn't matter that, that whether it's a subdivision or not, they have statutory oversight over the laying out of any roads. It also doesn't matter whether they say yes or no. They just have to have a, have a determination and give you a report, or 45 days elapsed, and then you can act. That allows us to proceed forward, very similar to the new procedure where there will be a notice to about us and a public hearing, and then you would, uh, vote this, uh, resolution.
Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Frangello?
Uh, two questions. One is, am I correct that we've done this property before?
It was on your agenda on anticipating that we would get planning board approval, but between the time we put it on the agenda and the planning board took it up, they declined to give the approval that was necessary.
Right.
So, we just took it off.
Right.
You didn't act on it.
It was on the agenda, but we didn't act on it.
Okay.
So, now what we're doing is actually referring it to the planning board.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then, just because it, it, it came in succession to the previous, um, statement of a private road, is the, did this, do, to all these subdivisions, there's a subdivision like this, did it go through that process once, of once declaring itself as a private road, and then we accept it?
They always start off as private roads. There's no way to make, start off of the road as a public road. So, a developer puts in the road, even though it's contemplated it will become a public road at some point, that's part of a process.
Okay. Do they make the statement that we had just made about the previous subdivision?
What?
The, 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 the previous, um, agenda item.
They give him the covenant?
This was always, it, it so happens, even though this was done under Chapter 40B, is it affordable? It was built up pretty much to planning board, roadway construction standards. It was frankly always contemplated that this would become a public road for two reasons. Number one, there's a lot of houses down there, and number two, it actually connects through. Charles Drive connects and keeps going.
I, I, I do agree that, that we should accept it. I guess what I'm trying to understand is whether the homeowners know that they are, whether it's reasonable for them to, uh, assume that it will become a public road, or if they, when they buy the home, know that they're buying a home that's been announced to be a private road, you know, pending any changes.
So, the way things work in this state is you have a constructive notice situation, which is basically if a document is on record at the registry of deeds relating to real estate, you as the owner or a prospective buyer either run it yourself, I have the opportunity to do so, or if you don't, it's too bad for you because you're on notice for any document that's on record at the registry prior to your transaction. Anything that comes afterwards, you're not generally bound by. But anything that's there for record, which is why when you buy a house, uh, you employ the, your own attorney or a bank attorney who runs the title as it said, and that will tell you, give you a report at the closing, what they found in terms of whether you have what's called good and clear record and marketable title, or there are some restrictions in place. So, the short answer is, you would at least know at a closing whether it's a public road because the acceptances go to record at the registry as well. So, they, they either know that it is accepted or not, and can probably tell whether it's intended to be accepted or not based on the size of the subdivision if for no other reason.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I remember when this project was built, this was, did include several houses that were part of the project that were 40B, um, which, you know, I'm happy they were able to put a couple of those in back then. Seems like yesterday that this was, uh, built. But there was the pretty, pretty clear intentions from the get go that this particular neighborhood was going to ultimately be public based on the fact that it is for all intents and purposes a cut through. You could actually go from the North Part of Franklin all the way to Popolatic and down to the, the west east side.
I have a feeling that won't be true for all acceptances coming forward.
So, this is an obvious and, um, and, and logical acceptance, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Pellegrini.
Just a question. Order of Layout, Acceptance and Taking, does usually go to the planning board? The planning board works on it first, checking the bonding for the roads and anything that needs to be done, and then it comes to the town council for us to vote, correct?
This is completely different.
But this is a different one.
There, there is a, this statute that we're proceeding under is the original statute that provided for public roads in the 1800s. So, if you were going to lay out Lincoln Street, uh, Pond Street, any street that's a main, a major thoroughfare, you would employ that statute, and it never made a distinction, nor did the legislature provide a special provision when subdivisions came into their own. So, it so happens that the planning board historically was operating under this statute, as was the council. You brought up many, many meetings ago about the fact that there appeared to be two different resolutions because you were actually used to seeing this resolution, when in fact, the one for the expedited procedure that should be seen again in the future looks different in terms of the captioning and description in it. In this case, because it was a 40B, and 40B can apply to residential subdivisions, the zoning board of appeals stepped into the, uh, step, uh, footpath of the planning board, on top of which, and again, there's a whole convoluted history that I'm not going to go into. However, the town, it, it, there was litigation, we reached a settlement with the developer, he reduced the number of houses, and it was agreed that rather than go back and get the planning board to oversee the layout and construction, the town engineer would do so using the planning board's, uh, rules and regulations, which was what was done. So, we had that oversight by the town representative as it was constructed, again, contemplating that eventually it was going to be accepted.
But wasn't that something to do about bonding too for the roads? And that's why the planning board was so involved to do this first?
No, I think we actually bonded this, uh, there was a bond put forward by the developer. Again, the planning board simply was out of the picture, it was handled by the town engineer instead.
Okay, but it's just this one here that we're doing?
This is a unique, as, as the town administrator said.
When we've done things a certain way for my 30 something years, you know, and I'd always get it from the planning board first and then to the council, so I get you. Okay, thank you.
Typically, by, excuse me, just one more point, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
By the point, by the time the usual subdivision gets to you, the bonding issue has been resolved by the planning board, they've released the bond, they've certified or represented that the roads are ready to be accepted as public roads.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any further discussion from the council, from the audience? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to refer resolution 22 dash 12 to the planning board. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Town administrators report. Jamie?
Uh, nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Future agenda items. Counselor Sheridan.
Uh, can we address the issue of the parking around downtown that was brought up earlier?
Dean, from Dean.
Dean College, yes.
Yeah, we can get a report from, go ahead.
I think, uh, through, I think the, I think the chief will be at the next meeting.
I think he will.
He actually has a long list. I was just looking at it.
Yeah, he'll be here, so we'll ask him to give us an update while he's here. Anything else?
That's it.
Counselor Frangello?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Hamblin?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to, um, agree with Counselor Sheridan on that. Thank you.
Counselor, call me a ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Definitely want to see and hear more about the parking situation. Um, and I'm not sure if it's appropriate to bring up here, but two weeks ago, we brought up a future agenda item, and I didn't see it talked about tonight, so does that mean it's going to be talked about at a future meeting?
We wouldn't necessarily be on the next agenda.
Okay.
Depending upon, our agendas are pretty, pretty booked for the next few, but which item are you referring to?
Just in particular, the, we, I had brought up the situation at the high school and asking for some discussion with the school committee to see what resources they needed to address the ongoing issues at the high school. I understand things take time. I just had hoped we would have had an update.
They'll be here at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Again, it's just coordination of committees sometimes.
That's fine.
Counselor Chandler?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Pellegrini?
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to add on to the discussion about the, the East Street, West Street neighborhood and Dean College. As part of the chief coming next week, uh, would it be possible for us to invite a representative from Dean College to come in and listen to the discussion just so that they get some input as to what their concerns may be?
We can put the offer out there. Jamie, would you, uh?
Sure.
Let them know?
Yep.
Thank you. Counselor Delarco?
Counselor Jones just said it, the same thing, if we could get Dean here, is, is she gone now?
No, no, May, uh, June.
Yeah, we probably ain't going to get anything done until she goes anyway. But yeah.
Okay. Uh, I don't have anything, so we'll move to Counselor Comments. Counselor, call me a ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just want to wish everyone a great Black History Month and encourage everybody to try, if at all possible, to learn something new about a group of people that you may not know a lot about. I have the privilege of raising an African American son, and I learn something new about his heritage, I feel like, every single day. So, I hope that in the spirit of what we just adopted as our, in our rules, that everybody can take a moment and enlighten themselves a little bit more about Black History Month. But thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Call me a ledger. Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm glad everyone brought up the, um, Dean parking situation. I wish, uh, was that Rose and Joanne? I know, I can't ask questions, so that's a statement. That was Rose and Joanne. Um, I think that she brought up one point tonight where he said, you know, they're at full staff finally, so I don't see why, I mean, what's that, 58, 59 guys? Somebody can't monitor that parking situation, but that's to bring up with him, but I just wanted the residents to know that we are thinking about, I mean, you know, if we're already at full staff, maybe they can bring back that parking control officer too, just a statement. Um, parking control officer because, you know, we're talking about more things downtown that some buildings aren't going to have parking, so that, something like that would be helpful to really help the whole downtown keep in check. Just more thoughts on that. The other, and obviously, as that gentleman said, Dean did have a police department, but that was taken away, so that could be a question if they're ever getting that back. They handle a lot of that stuff. And I started to think, um, Deputy Chief West, it was actually five years to the day he came here and was made lieutenant. Literally five years to the day. It's kind of interesting. And lastly, please don't forget your dog license. I went in and did that because they're going to up the fee if you don't.
Penalty.
You get the penalty. So, I snuck in under the wire. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Pellegrini?
Um, I just wanted to bring up Priscilla Canetta's name again. She has been so helpful in the Town of Franklin, um, friends of Franklin. I can remember one time that I had to call for a friend of mine that needed assistance. There were no questions asked, and she just was able to help them out, and after helping them out, the person then volunteered time to help with the friends of Franklin. So, you know, one hand kind of washes the other. I kind of thought that the problem with the parking was all set.
I did too.
And we hadn't heard anything about it. So, that's why it's important for people to come to the council and let us know what's going on. Um, and I, and I truly mean that. I thought everything was taken care of there with parking, but evidently it isn't. So, uh, people out there, please come forward and during citizens' comment and make mention of anything that there is a problem with, and please know that we will take a try to anyway, take care of things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Pellegrini. Counselor Sheridan?
Say happy, uh, Lunar New Year to our Asian residents.
Thank you. Year of the tiger, I believe.
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Frangello?
Yeah, thank you. Few things. Uh, one is, we've always had a, at the high school, a fantastic DECA program, uh, student businesses, and, and we dominate, you know, the area, uh, but in the past, the most we've ever sent to states is 60 students, which is already, you know, uh, maybe more than any other high school. This year, we're sending 119 students to states, uh, which is, which is insane. It also comes with a cost, so if you're out there and, and want to, um, help your, uh, your high school students, uh, they are fundraising, um, looking to, to build the funds to get everyone to, to states. Um, two other quick things. Uh, one is Panther TV at, at the high school, um, has been putting out some fantastic videos or like highlighting stories of students and their backgrounds and some, some, um, different cultures and identities and, and people that are coming up, uh, through our high school. Really recommend checking out Panther TV on YouTube. Uh, and the last thing is, we got a new bookstore coming, um, and I think that's opening, uh, this week, uh, so very excited about that.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through the chair, I just quickly, I would like to, um, send a shout out to the DPW for the great work they did during the blizzard. Um, we were, we got to go on the road, well, I didn't go on the roads because I followed Brutus's directions, but, um, they worked really hard and, um, they did a great job, I think. Um, and I just wanted to remind people on your calendar, March 7th, um, the Franklin for All Public Forum, you can go to the high school, you can zoom in, um, just mark it on your calendar now, and we'll give, I will continue to give you updates, um, about how to get into it and, but really, we need everyone to participate in this zoning project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Jones?
You didn't stretch that one out that far?
No.
Okay. Stole my comment, thank you. Uh, but in all honesty, all joking aside, I'd like to thank the DPW for all their hard work that was put into making the storm disappear for all intents and purposes. It was remarkable, the amount of effort that went into clearing the roads. That was a tremendous storm. We haven't had a storm like that in quite some time, and it was really nice to see how much hard work got put into that. I cannot even begin to fathom how exhausted everybody must be.
Oh, really?
Bobby.
They've been better than the airport.
Everybody, lot of, lot of good reports from the citizens, uh, in regards to, to the roads and how everything was cleared up. Um, you know, again, it's, it's, and I know it's, it's not Brutus, it's him and his whole crew, and I just wanted to thank the whole crew for, for all the hard work that got put into that. The timing couldn't have been better as far as the town is concerned, falling on a Saturday and getting cleaned up on Sunday. Didn't really impact schools too much, which is a good thing. Um, I do also want to thank, um, the teachers. Being a teacher, I have to take, I should honestly state that I want to thank all of the teachers who have made it through the past month because, um, just even at our school in Dorchester, I had half my students gone for the first week, and then I had the other half gone for the second week. And there was such a tremendous impact, again, by that second hit of Omicron after the holidays on our teachers, and the, and the superintendent and the school department really stepped up to do their best to try to make it through what was a very difficult month. The good news is, is that there's a light at the end of the tunnel. The numbers are going out quick. Things are looking optimistic. I'm, I'm really looking forward to finally getting past this, this pandemic and getting that back to some normalcy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Delarco?
Uh, thanks. Well, yeah, thanks to the, thanks to Brutus, too busy, always calls me to make sure I'm awake when he's awake, so we, we always talk, and he always tells, uh, we always, uh, trade stories, as you would say. Um, but I, I also think that the Franklin High School girls' cheerleading squad's going to nationals, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Luck to them. Luck to them. Yeah. I saw them up at Dunkin' Donuts over the weekend, so they could use a few bucks too going down there. But outside of that, let's hope we don't have any ice this weekend.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Delarco. Again, I would echo my fellow counselors' thoughts and comments to, as far as the DPW, DPW did a fantastic job in a very lengthy storm. It wasn't, it took, took quite a while, and I know they, they were out, they went back in, they went out again, sending a few home for rest. And I, we at one point had 208 homes without power on Saturday, and they were back up within two, three hours. So, but only 208 without power in the entire town.
That was huge.
So, that was, that was certainly a great thing. I was communicating on a regular basis with Brutus throughout the storm, and at one point, he said, you hear that horn? Come take a ride. So, he picked me up in one of the big plows, and I went out for two hours with him on the plow. You don't ever want to do that. That is a bumpy slam banging around. I give those, those plow drivers and all our DPW staff huge kudos. It's, you're bouncing all over the place.
He won't let me drive. He makes me drive if I go.
So, anyway, that's, that's it for this evening. We do have the need for an executive session, and because of the topic in executive session, I need to recuse myself, so I will hand the chair over to Counselor Delarco, Vice Chair Delarco, to take over from here. They will not be returning from executive session to open session. So, with that, I'll take my computer.
Did you get everything you need there, Mike?
Yeah, I got it all.
Glasses?
Taking glasses.
So, I need a.
Line 15.
You've got, Mr. Attorney, you've got to make a declaration.
You've got to make this.
Yeah, right. Considering the purchase.
You'd like to make a motion to enter executive session.
No, no, don't we have to adjourn first?
Yeah, see, we, we join after executive session, without.
All right, I need to make a motion, consideration the purchase of.
To enter executive session.
No, no, we're just making a motion. Consider the, to consider the purchase to exchange the lease or value of real property because of an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board on Schmitz Farm, Prospect Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of considering the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property because of an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the board.
Second.
And the chair has so declared.
Has so, the chair has declared.
Second.
We will not return for.
We will not return. Second.
We will not return. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, no, you got to take a roll call.
Roll call.
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call in executive session, that's right.
This is my favorite part. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I haven't got two more meetings around going, so.
Do you really?
Yeah. Definitely, yeah.
Call me a ledger.
Yes.
Sheridan?
Aye.
Chandler?
Yes.
Frangello?
Yes.
Pelagri?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Jones, chair?
Yes.
Vice chair. And our sir is recused.
Recused.
Eight, two.
Motion carries.
He went home.
Hit the button.
No, TV, it's off.
He went home?
Is everything off, Chris?
He did it for us.
Thank you.
You did it for us?